There it goes. And it goes into the DJ booth.
Morning.
Jim, who can you lead us off in a pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Okay, ambulance barn, gas conversion, Versini, Hal, is Keith coming?
No, he's, uh, he's in England.
He's in England, nice. How did the meeting go last night? Anybody show up?
Uh, it was good.
It was good.
We had a very interesting meeting.
And they were off on the air.
But we're going to do is, uh...
Public awareness, we're gonna go to the civic centers and the communities and we're gonna put a brochure.
For the senior community so they know what's happening.
Alright, so what are we doing here?
Well, the Jamesport building, the heating system, uh, over the past couple of years has cost us a exorbitant amount of money and is completely inefficient for the needs out there because of the oil system that's there. So we asked for a gas conversion estimate to switch over the heating system to make it more efficient long term. And as well, we use, for the living quarters, we have a, um, air conditioner in the window that runs, you know, twenty-four hours a day, which is not efficient.
Is anybody there the whole time?
Um, yeah, well, they go out there, but we have extra staff, so, you know. But the problem is, is if you go out there and it's not on, so we have it set for seventy-two and it comes on and off as it's needed. But it's still not as efficient as, uh, so I believe, uh, Ernesto got an estimate to convert everything over and to put in an AC unit as well to, uh, correct the problem.
Alright, one second, it costs...
Can I, can I make an observation? I, I can tell you this, we, we did this at our, our church, we have oil.
Mm-hmm.
And we switched over to natural gas. It cost the church about twenty thousand to do that. We saved that money in three years, just in oil costs.
Yeah, this is...
I can't wait for the Waiting River Fire District to run it past my house so I can pick up the loft.
Just, just to pour some oil.
You got no money left.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is eleven thousand.
You hear that Waiting River Fire District? Make sure you run that natural ga- natural gas line.
It's cleaner, it's, it's cheaper.
Right, and the problem is, is that we, we have, when the, we don't, nobody checks the fuel oil in the tank and then it runs out.
No, that doesn't happen.
Then that costs us a full, uh, deliveries service.
Because no one's there all the time.
Well, our people don't have a check. It's in the ground, it doesn't have a flow or any signal, you have to stick the tank.
Yeah, in the ground tank.
Do we know if there's any sentence?
Or it's gotta be filled with...
No. They stopped giving them away. Alright, so what's this gonna cost us?
Eleven thousand.
Around eleven thousand.
So you have it in your reserve fund, so, um, how old is that oil burn?
It's on its last leg. So it would be a really good time to convert everything over. The proposal that we got from our HVAC vendor is to remove the, the boiler system that's there. Uh, put in a split, buckless, heating and air conditioning unit for the lounge and kitchen area. There is an existing air conditioning unit, uh, in the garage portion of the building, that'll stay. And then we'll just put a, uh, industrial type of gas heater for the ambulance barn itself.
Yeah, because that, uh, that burn has to be at least twenty-five years old.
Yeah.
It's...
It's terribly inefficient.
The building was built...
Yeah, it's sitting on four bricks.
It's been a long time ago.
That's not, uh...
Well, that was code back then.
Did you get three proposals?
Uh, I, I put an RFP out for five vendors, I got two responses.
Okay.
So I was just looking to see, you know, how much you...
So eleven thousand would be the cost?
Right, well, that includes bringing the gas in from the street, setting up the meter and, you know...
And the other guy was twenty-one thousand?
Yeah, and to abandon the tank.
That's additional.
That's included in the eleven thousand.
Included in the eleven thousands to abandon the tank? Can we pull it and not fill it with sand?
It'll be removed.
Okay, I'd rather have it pulled.
The tank removal's thirty-two hundred dollars.
Alright, so...
I'd like to see the energy comparison.
It's three thousand to install the AC unit for the lounge area.
That's heating and AC though.
Yes.
Alright, okay.
And forty-two hundred to install a gas unit for the barn area, the garage area.
Well, it sounds like, um, I mean, you have money in your reserve fund, you'd just be pulling it out of your capital reserve fund, so... That's what you guys wanna do, that I don't, is it work okay with you?
Yeah, I'm okay with it. It's gonna be, uh, the long run's gonna save money.
Right.
So that's basically what we're looking at.
It's clean, it's clean energy, yes.
And this proposal compared to the other proposal is apples, is the apples, they both fit on the same thing? Okay.
Very similar units.
Okay.
Did you get your two chassis back? I heard they were gone last night.
Yes, well, I haven't seen if they're there, but they would be open by Mike, so I'll go by there and see how we made out. But Jeff was supposed to be going on last night, pick him up.
Alright, alright, sounds like a plan, just, uh, this, so the two propos- well, it's under twenty-one thousand, so I think, I can never remember. Just, this meets our...
I believe it does.
You gotta talk to Anne Marie, I, I think if it's under twenty-one thousand, you need two or three, I don't know. Just make sure it meets our procurement policy. Alright, that sounds like a plan.
And just before they leave, I just want to tell the public, because it's a good way to get it out, that May first, we're gonna start billing, the ambulance will start billing for automobile accidents, uh, just automobile accidents, that's May first. We're on a trip to go down and we had a public meeting last night and I'm just sorry, most of the public didn't come. We had four members and, or five members here, and four of them were from the ambulance corps. So, I mean, I, I stress, when we have these public meetings, the public has to get out and listen because we wanna hear their questions and a lot of times their questions will have something we forgot about and remind us. So, I, I just wish we would get more people these public hearings. Thank you.
We only get people when there's something controversial. Alright, thank you.
Something personal, right.
Yeah.
Something personal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much.
We have Angela, why don't we do Karen, we're gonna take Angela and Elaine here. Can you just see if, can you ask Karen, could you ask Chris Kepner to come in?
Sure.
We'll take them. Come on, guys, come on up, guys.
We talk about Jamesport Civic. Jamesport grant application. What are we granting? What are we granting money for?
Good morning.
Good morning.
For me to live off of.
That's what I wanted to know.
The ambulance barn, it's gonna be a new HVAC system.
Let me ask, you mean the one in, the one in Jamesport or the one here?
The one in Jamesport.
Are they going to continue to provide service year round or just over the summer months like they did last year?
Yeah, he says when, when they have, uh, a bunch of people...
It would be a question you would ask him as he goes.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll, we'll ask him for that, okay.
You don't get sick in the winter anyway. People don't get sick in the winter.
No one in South Jamesport, Jamesport gets sick, period.
No, you, your population goes down to twenty percent.
We're hearty, healthy folks.
It's a good line.
Alright, so, uh, what, Chris is here, why don't we get started on, uh...
Morning.
Morning, Chris.
Morning, how are you?
Good.
Well, she likes, but she likes.
Um, well, basically, we are looking to do the sidewalks and the lights. These are photographs of the, uh, portion that will be done in the fall. You can see the condition.
Don't put it on the microphone.
Oh, sorry. This is the scope of the whole project. Basically, where it stopped was O'Neill's, it, next year, when we apply for this, another round of the grants, we'll do in front of Sharper's Hill, but of course, that was all up in the air until recently.
Right.
But now, things are coming together, which is really a good thing.
All because of Paul Tona. That whole thing came together because of Paul Tona brought Tony Noda- uh, Tony Nono, wrong, Nono. Nono and the other guy into my office and the whole thing, it really, Paul Tona's the guy to thank for that.
Well, it's wonderful.
It's that energy, uh, networking.
Yeah.
It was, it was energy.
That portion is what we're doing in the fall.
Yeah, in my office to talk about what they could do with the property and how about preservation. That's how the whole thing...
Through the town, up to the corner of Manor Lane where the meeting house is.
So...
And these are our lights, which are, I don't know how old they are, maybe Chris knows.
Those are vintage polished down lights too.
Right.
They went in at the same time when Bob was, Bob Cas, some of them went in then, when he was town supervisor.
Has this stuff been presented to the historic landmarks preservation, Richard Wines, because this corridor is a historic or Jamesport?
Right, well, we're looking to do historic, uh, more appropriate to, uh, Jamesport colonial type lighting.
Okay, so...
And I've spoken to Drew Dillingham and he would install them. We would retrofit these.
Well, one of the things that we have to do is we wanna make sure they're consistent with what we did downtown because we don't wanna have six different types of light fixtures as we've had. We're trying to keep a common theme of light fixture.
So that when you have to repair something or replace it, that you have the parts.
Well, he said I needed to pass it by you, he said he had no objection to it.
Okay, but it is a historic district, so let's, we gotta...
Why don't we email it?
We'll email it to Richard Wines.
Well, that's, that's not, get ahead of ourselves.
Richard has been at meetings, at civic meetings, in which this has been presented, he has not raised any objections.
No, no, he knows about it.
You guys are getting ahead of yourselves.
Okay.
We, well, we're trying to keep the same lights, so we have lights downtown, so those were chances are, those would be the lights we would put here. And we do that because it's cost effective for the town. I don't think the town, I've spoken to town engineer about this and he's pretty adamant that we keep the same fixtures so that when there's repair problems or other problems, we have...
Totally understandable, I understand that.
Very similar to that anyway, they're very similar.
But, um, you know, if we, you know, if we could do it, I, I certainly prefer...
But we do have double lights downtown, so that...
They look very similar to the ones downtown.
They do, they do.
Well, what we've had planned to do is retrofit these, just replace, the poles are in very good, the poles are in great shape, they're very good quality.
Just replace the heads?
High, you know, they're, they're heavy duty and, yeah, just, we can retrofit this to one globe, get rid of the double
Mm-hmm.
lights. And we can get a variation that's semi-cut off of this, so we have no light trespass. That meets the town code, which these do not.
We have to, we don't have to have the, we should, Drew Dillingham is here. Then Drew, Drew go out there.
Are you, are you looking to put LEDs down there, lights?
Yeah, though, these poles are probably shot too.
I put that when we were...
LEDs are horrible.
These poles rot out on the bottom, so just because they look nice, because the salt sits in the base, they may all be shot anyway. I'm thinking if we're gonna, hey Drew, come on in.
But I know when we were changing the lights downtown too, we had to replace the poles and the lights because the lights, that we wanted the LED lights to save electricity costs, didn't fit within the wiring and the poles that we had downtown, so...
So we're talking about the lights in Jamesport, we're talking about trying to keep them the same as the ones downtown so that we keep one common light stock.
Yes, absolutely.
This is the picture.
Do we, it's my feeling, if we're gonna apply for the grant, we should do the pole and the light 'cause I'm thinking the poles are gonna be rotted at the base, which we've seen before.
Can you check them out? So I did the, um, I was in charge of the downtown revitalization of Pacha about sixteen years ago.
Right.
Round two. I was surprised that Jamesport had never applied for a grant. Um, and as you can see, there's a lot that could be improved.
Because you, the problem is, you're competing, one of the things we have to balance is the competition with downtown Riverhead where we're trying to get as much infusion of capital to downtown Riverhead, that's probably why.
Okay, but we can't go much further downhill in my estimation. We, we have merchants and, and they deserve a chance.
This is, Jamesport is just as important as downtown. I mean, we have a vital business community there, but...
Not, I didn't, I'm not, I'm not saying that, Jody. What I'm saying is that our focus has been to try to bring the...
Right, I know.
And so we have to be careful that, you know, we're, we are also trying to get lights for the back parking lot. So let's talk to Drew about the lights and the poles.
And the poles, okay.
Um, do we know what the, um, what, can we find out what the quality the poles are? Because it seems to me if we're gonna do this, we should just do it right and not do it half ass.
The off poles, they're...
And, and the ampage for these and the wiring to retrofit these, these globes.
It only requires one grounding wire, which Drew has already, Emily McPhee, we spoke.
Yes, right.
And, um, it apparently only requires one grounding wire to retrofit to one luminaire instead of two.
Yeah, right, retrofit's gonna be simple.
Okay.
It's just a matter of getting everything.
How much do these cost for what you wanna do?
And whether or not, how would you evaluate?
Okay, um...
Okay, if you're concerned about the, the condition of the actual fixture, of all of that pole and that, how will that be evaluated prior to making a decision if we should be just simply retrofitting what exists there or going for pole replacements and, and installation of new...
Yeah, how long would it take you to, to, to look at the poles and see if they keep or staying there?
I would have to talk to Mike about his schedule, but I know...
Well, we wouldn't get the money for quite a while, it'd be, we'd be talking twenty eighteen before any of this actually happens.
This is under the round fifteen application before they loosen those up?
Yeah, so they usually do the award in December, then we have to contract, which, you know...
Right.
And for these particular projects, it could take years because right now we're working on, uh, because it's on Main Street, the, the county requires a DOT work permit for twenty years. That is, we're into our third year trying to get for the Main Street lights, which we have the, we don't even have the contract for the lights we put in.
But even, even if we're just replacing the lights there, we still need a DOT?
Yep, so that's what they require. So it could take three years through this money to get it into contract.
You gotta get a DOT work permit for this?
And they, they want a twenty-year work permit, which DOT never gives out. The only reason they give it out is because the county's requiring it.
Well, if they required it, we were just replacing the, we're missing two globes right now.
We might be able to replace those actually.
You can do maintenance on the poles that are already there.
That's maintenance, right, it's maintenance if it's not replaced.
That should not be a heavy...
What about work for me?
You know what, though, if we're taking those...
That, that's the county requirement, it's not, we don't need it to do the work. It's the county bonding requirement because they bond for twenty years, so they require an easement on the property and the county attorneys have decided that they want this work permit from DOT to satisfy the easement from the DOT's perspective. It just doesn't really make sense, but...
Chris, let me ask, does the work permit that you currently have, that doesn't expand to anywhere else, it's just specific to what's given.
We don't even have it.
You don't have one for downtown.
No, and, and they did the same thing to Brookhaven, it took them five years to get it.
So how did we get the downtown lights done if we didn't have the work permit? Because that's state property.
Oh, we gave the co- we were very sneaky. The state was giving us a hell of a time doing the sidewalks and they wanted things we couldn't get, so we turned the money back to the state and they went ahead and did all the sidewalks without any of the things they required us to do. And so we said, okay, while you're doing it, we're gonna give you new lights.
Yeah.
We went out on a limb, which we normally don't do. We bought the lights without actually getting the grant signed, which we're still working on. Did we get that one signed yet from them?
I think the, and the state put a...
For the state, no, we're, we're waiting for the work permit, so the county attorney is trying to get the work permit from DOT and someone retired, so it's...
No, we put the lights in. Yeah, we, we retrofitted those lights.
They all can't talk at the same time, guys.
We...
Can we, yeah?
Go ahead, Sean.
I, what Chris was saying, so we're, we're still waiting for the contract of that one?
Because of this work permit issue. So it's taken them two years and then we had the person that gave the work permit to Brookhaven and then he retired. So now we don't even have a contact to do the work permit.
So the county, so the DOT installed our lights and we need, that we paid for, and we need a work permit.
That we paid.
So, okay, it's gonna take a while, but, but we'll go forward.
So I think what needs to be, you know, really sort of focused on is, there's this round fifteen and what's gonna be in this application, even though it may take two years to bring it to fruition, three years before we start any work, four years before you get any money, and we'll all be retired and...
Oh, no. No matter what happens, I won't be supervisor then.
We're having... It's time to end it.
Term limits.
So the thing is that is to look for, I mean, as, and this is due May twenty-sixth, and of course, this is a, you know, uh, it puts the, the responsibility in Chris's office to get this out. Um, we as a civic are prepared to provide you with whatever parts here are needed from us. But I think the first step is, Drew, is to whether or not we're gonna be asking for a total replacement.
There's, there's also a match to the grant, so, yeah.
There's a match would be, we've gotten a commitment, Elaine has told me a commitment from the town highway department for all materials for sidewalks, as the match.
So what is the estimate for the cost of just replacing the bulbs, just out of curiosity?
The, the one lum, one luminaire is twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, including shipping.
For each one?
For each one, yes.
Okay, and how many are there? Fifteen?
We have fifteen. Yes, and, um...
That's a thirty-six grand.
We, um, I'm getting an estimate for the cost of the next section of the sidewalk that he's going to be doing and then we can match that.
We were also talking about the sidewalk being done as part of the, the project with the park?
Yeah.
Yes. Well, that's what we did for what Sean was explaining earlier, is that, you know, when Councilman Dunleavy and I attended meetings in Hop Dog at the DOT when we were talking about the sidewalk plan and we were talking about the light posts and the benches and things of that nature, it all got wrapped into one. So I think that's, Sean, I think you make an excellent point, that that should all be looked at for everything that you wanna do there and...
Well, yeah, maybe the DOT will do it as part of the commitment to the park.
Maybe the DOT, because we had sidewalk money there and they would probably do that, they would probably say, okay, well, while we're doing the sidewalk.
But which, which money are you talking about?
Lights.
We've been trying to follow that down, we have, um, we, Chris gave us, uh, s- this, um... Four earmarked funds that were never used, so...
So when they repurposed the, the earmarked funds that were in Jamesport, they, um, put it into a category that's very general for the East End that it was, uh, pedestrian access and then handicap access. So we wrote a letter when they posted the money on their transportation improvement plan for them to please use the money. I think we have to lobby Laval, Colombo, and maybe the town board...
This is the state improvement.
Yeah, maybe the town board can pass a resolution for DOT to use this money in the strip.
Get that money back.
But now we were working because of the park, the county can also help us to sort of lobby for the money to be used there.
But wouldn't the county only be concerned with the strip of where they, where they own their land, which is probably...
Well, it's all pedestrian access.
And we'd have that.
To the thing there, to, you know, and the...
Sure.
It's, since it's pedestrian based, you really wanna have the businesses be able to walk to the park.
They have a piece of pie.
So that's like one continuous...
Right, that would have been our second, you know, next year when we applied for the second round, we would have included in front of Sharper's Hill.
But I, so Chris, this round fifteen, that's a state grant, right?
No, that is the county's, the downtown...
There's something county, and the county wants the twenty-year state work permit.
Yeah, the downtown revitalization money.
Okay, so, so...
If you have a better way of doing this...
Is there any state grants coming out that would be for the sidewalks and for the lights and benches and bus turnouts? Because I can send them all the letters from complaints that we've got since the Aquabag bus station has been, uh, fallen in progress.
I think we just have to lobby, um, we have to lobby the DOT to, to, they have the budget for it and it's the repurposed earmarks.
Good, so I...
So we just have to formally lobby them.
Do you think that that would be a better way to do it?
Yeah, and we were trying to wrap the park into it because then it's a really, a, you know...
Yeah.
So let's do this.
What is, okay, for the repurposed earmarks, how much is that? What, what sum of money we're talking about?
Oh, it was, we, we gave back Waiting River money, which was close to a million, and then, uh, Jamesport specifically was two forty.
Okay.
So why don't we do this?
This is the original, but let me just follow through, this is the letter that you gave us, Chris, um, to Lee Zeldin. And, um, I followed up on this, I spoke to the person who was the contact for his office concerning these funds and he, um, sent me over to, uh, to speak to Glenn Morell at, in Hop Dog and they said we were not eligible for those funds.
That, that's incorrect though. I, I'll speak to Glenn Morell because we just need to go through the right channels.
Alright, so let's do this. Let's pass a resolution to ask them to repurpose the money, to, to give it to the DOT. See, the reason we gave it back was because it was impossible for us to spend it because of the, the strings that they attached to it.
I know. Right.
When we were successful with downtown Main Street, we had already given this other stuff back, the Waiting River was a separate issue. Nobody wanted the stuff to go, they were knocking down beautiful rock walls and it was just a silly waste of money. But this money, we'll do a resolution, we'll ask for it back for the sidewalk, let's apply for the grants. Do we, we can use the number roughly of what we bought lights for, because we have to go to a public bid for the lights or a state contract, if you can find that.
Right, or county contract.
Our county contract. Let's see what our, our lights cost now, uh, the ones that we've used all over and then, um, put together the, the grant application and see whether we can do it that way.
So you're looking at, let me just get, the threat of this is we're going back to the state of New York to say to them,
we've got sitting on the table one point two four million bucks that were to be used for various, uh, improvements, sidewalk lights, whatever, pedestrian ways, walk...
Can we use the Waiting River money for that?
Yeah, they have to, the legislation, the federal legislation...
It's a town, it's a town repurposing for the town.
Well, it's not really a town, the federal legislation required them to repurpose the money within a fifty-mile radius. So it's very broad, but the category that the money went into was a giant pot of money because they repurposed other earmarks. So it, it was several million dollars, it was above and beyond the Riverhead money. But then it mentioned, um, you know, uh, the pedestrian access from New York City to Orient along twenty-five and then, uh, handicap access in the towns of Brookhaven, Riverhead, Southwood, you know, and some of the East End towns.
That's great, because you know what, we really do need a bus turnout there.
So essentially, we're looking to, yeah, we're looking to, there's this pot of money, unused monies that can be repurposed and we're saying...
It, and it has been assigned.
We're saying what we'd like to do is have the chunk of it to do work with.
We have to target it here, yeah.
We have to determine what we're going to target it for and how much we're going to do. And we're basically saying what we're doing is increasing pedestrian access, walkways and stuff, which would then include your lighting because you have to see where you're going.
More compelling case because of the county park, so...
Now, you're talking about the sidewalk money in Waiting River, repurpose that one?
That's, yeah, that's been swept.
That's been swept.
Oh, you're repurposed that one?
I didn't, federal government did.
It's, it's sitting in, it's sitting in a big pot and what we're saying is we're gonna take a couple of meatballs out of that pot.
Right.
Okay, basically, that's it, that's what we're...
So this guy's gonna see how many meatballs we need to take out.
How many we need, okay.
Right, how quickly can you, I mean, honestly?
That's what I was gonna ask, when, when, would you like this done by?
Tomorrow afternoon.
When's the grant application?
Well, it's on the, it's on the...
I think it's like May twenty-fifth, yeah.
May twenty-sixth, yes.
But I could, I could do it pretty quickly.
So if you get the re, let me ask, if you get the repurposed monies, where does the application go? Is it this application that goes in or is it...
That, that goes in for the lights and then I, um, say the match is the, the sidewalk reconstruction. But we have to lobby the DOT because they have to do the design and then they, they do everything in capital projects over, uh, multiple years. So they would put the specific project into their capital plan for design next year and then construction, you know, the following, they...
I guess that, the thing that I'm, I'm kind of like Stunna this morning about is the fact that, okay, we got monies that went back to the federal government that they do through DOT, that's how they get administered. So we're gonna be asking for that, we're gonna be asking that they be, again, earmarked for specific projects.
Right.
Those monies now then get put through Suffolk County?
No, they, they, the DOT would actually run the project, just the one.
So they downtown it by association? So we're gonna be applying to DOT, not Suffolk County.
We're not applying to Suffolk County?
Well, the lights, we, we would apply to, for the lights.
That would be the match.
Wouldn't the lights be included in the other one because it's, it's public, what you said was a more general public access, um, sort of thing to make...
Maybe, but I... Maybe, but it's, if you show county participation because of county's investment in Sharper's Hill and then you say the county's involved and the state's involved, then we have a better argument to go to the state and say, give us back that money because the county is buying property and the county is giving us money for the lighting and all we need you state for are the sidewalks and...
Well, the only thing, my only concern is that each time you have, one of, I'm serious, well, each time, if DOT is going to give you the whole thing, they want a match.
I can ask DOT if they'll do the total project. Yeah.
They're not, here's just the bucks and there's no match. Suffolk County wants a match, which means that it costs the town twice to support a project for a match.
No, no, the, the DOT does it, they do it on their own.
Yeah, I'll ask them if they'll do it with the lawyers.
We're gonna repurpose the money back to DOT.
So they get the money and, and so we have to convince them that you guys wanna do this work, okay.
And that's what makes it work, because if we get it and give it to the DOT, the DOT is very happy because they don't always get a lot of money so they're happy to take it and use it, so...
So there's no match for us with New York State DOT.
DOT.
There's just a match with Suffolk County for lighting.
No, but I'll ask if they'll do the lights too because then it might get done faster.
It might, and, you know, and it, and it just makes it...
But it's definitely like a three-year...
It's more efficient to do, yeah.
It's a lot easier with DOT because they'll put as many regulations on what you have to do before you, you fix it. You will see downtown, what we, we have to do downtown, but when they took it over, they just put them in.
Okay.
So it's a lot easier.
But that seems, seems like a long-term, a long-term plan and a short-term plan.
So the question is that, okay, in terms of timeline, finding out when, if these monies can be repurposed, we can take part of these repurposed monies out and then getting DOT to agree. I mean, how do you see that unfolding, Chris, in terms of getting towards whether or not we need to make a decision about filing this on the twenty sixth?
Deadline. Uh, I can, I can talk, yeah.
I have a pretty good feeling with the phone call and I mean, you guys could still sell Laval and it's like in the combo also.
I would file it anyway.
I mean, I, you can file it and pull it back, but it just, you know, I'm also thinking about Chris's workload with regard to this and whether or not, you know, as if things can be done sequentially.
One more just a few days. Yeah. She's, she's, she's very good at it.
Yeah, yeah. Rather than, you know, doing multiple things all at once, it makes no sense.
I, I think, I think Sean just said something that makes a lot of sense and he asked Chris to file both, so get the money from the state and file the county and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's definitely, it's crazy.
Okay, as long as there's no, no, an issue with the, the amount.
Don't know how.
So now we get back to from us for this, Chris, what do you need? What do you need from the civic?
Just uh like letters of support, I can, I can give you.
We would like to be a partner to this, no money, letters of support.
I'm used to saying that, no problem.
Well, they actually said they don't want letters of support from the grant. But it doesn't hurt. It hurts. They, they, I, I went to the seminar.
I filed like ten of these and I, I'm very clear on what's required.
We're good, we'll get, we'll do, we have to do.
Okay. Christine, anything that you need, you let us know.
How long?
You work with Chris.
And you're gonna learn how many meatballs we wanna take out of the pot.
I wanna take them all.
May first, you're gonna do it by May first. And so can we take some of the meatballs out of the pot for downtown parking or any of the other stuff?
It would have to be on twenty five.
Sid, we don't need any, what sidewalks we need in Waiting River, I can't, I can't.
I thought Waiting River didn't want sidewalk.
They don't want it down, they don't want it down in Waiting River.
I.
I want.
Can't make you wind up what you want, that's the problem. Half the people want it.
I want the sidewalk to go.
We're not, we can all talk, we can't all talk at the same time.
I want the sidewalk to go south from twenty five A by the post office all the way to Long Pond Road.
Okay, that, the problem there was that that's not a state road and then the county, town has to do the match and do the work and then it becomes a town nightmare.
Sidewalk to nowhere.
So if you do it on a state road, it's not, they just take it over.
Yeah, then they can, exactly.
All the people from within those subdivisions over there will come and they ride their bikes in the street and they walk in the street, so it's not really a sidewalk to nowhere, it's a sidewalk to a subdivision.
You got the one that go down the Long Pond Road?
Okay.
Yeah.
Or do you have a question?
I just wanted to say one thing, because there was public comment on the money that went back in that was taken from the town away back into this general pot.
Oh, good lord.
Uh, we have been in contact with DOT and in contact with Zeldin's office and part of what the DOT is waiting for, because the money was in the pot for the town, in the pot for Jamesport and taken away, they didn't want to be.
Wasn't taken away, we gave it back to them.
Gave, gave it back. So they didn't want to, they, they felt that the town had had the money and that there was really no significant projects that needed to be done there. So if the town goes back to them and say, you know what, there is significant projects there, they probably will re-earmark that money for Jamesport.
That's fine. Okay, find out how many emo meat, meatballs we want.
We think so. We agree.
Chris, where can we use these other meatballs?
Uh, anywhere on a state road, but we'd have to really lobby, the, the DOT is not very pleasant to us, so we'd have to like
We will, yeah.
Think we just said that. And they're not pleasant to anybody.
Get um, you know, the, the legislators behind it, yeah, the ropes, the state reps.
Oh, good. Yeah, this. Alright, well, let's do this. And then let's do the, the round fifteen, just in case.
Fifteen.
All you people get together and get these things going.
Yeah, okay. And then parking for now.
And Sid's gonna let you know how many meatballs he wants.
Okay.
Well, parking down.
We'll get moving.
On a state road.
Let's get together so we're applying.
We'll get moving.
Right.
Well, Chris says, yeah, this way, and it probably will be, yeah, put there.
Okay, we have already written a letter, um, trying to reclaim these funds, so, and which I gave you a copy of.
Right, right.
Can I ask a question? I realize that this is a long-term plan, but you were saying earlier that there are some lights that are not working now or that are not.
Oh, yeah, they're not even, they're gone.
We can do maintenance on those lights at this point, right? There's no, I mean, you don't need a DOT permit to go down and fix a broken light.
Yeah. You have to let him know what number.
Yeah, if we're using the same lights, I mean, if we have to use the same lights, uh.
Well, at least we consider we're working and we're cared of ones that aren't working for now, anyway.
No, if we, you could do that. So I guess it depends on this, on the state of the poles, if they're for the.
No, no, we'll repair the lights now, get them working.
Okay.
Uh, they're working, we had them replaced.
Oh, they're all working?
Whatever exists is working.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We're talking about the old Polish town lights. These look like Polish town lights. So if you had parts, you guys have already probably moved them around and.
Right. Yeah, those are done, those are gone.
Alright, we got a plan.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
So you're gonna do a resume for us.
Okay, and then maybe, uh, Elaine, if, let me just look at what you have and then I'll, while you're here, are you gonna be here for another five minutes?
Two things.
Yeah, I didn't bring everything I have.
Okay.
Okay, we speak till the day.
Okay.
Pole number ten is knocked over.
She just wants to know what you've done already so that she can.
Going down the ramp on the right hand side, right next to the steps.
Some stuff I need to, I need to wear, I put it.
And we got the solar light one, pole number ten, okay.
You know, the DOT's actually.
Sean. It's on the right hand side of the ramp?
Huh?
It's on the right hand side of the ramp?
Right hand side going down the ramp and right by the stairs.
Okay, well, you guys can work that out, because we got Karen that wants to anxiously get back to site plans, right?
Wait, but I, am I gonna do? Site plan reviews.
Okay.
Alright, Karen?
Okay, what's the other thing?
Also, we have a solar light up at Griffin and Main Street that was put up years ago.
Well, George put it up.
It's not working, I don't understand. It's for the, it's for the flagpole.
Morning.
Why not with water?
Excuse me. If we can use.
I want faster at night and it's, it's not working.
I think it would be better to, better quality than some of the ones down down.
Okay, well Drew's gonna look into it and see if the posts are good and they're not running from the bottom and then he'll report back to us.
Yeah.
Hi Karen, how are you?
Just gonna review the, the, you know, the lamps from Southold Town.
Good.
Okay.
And cut off and um Southold, I think it was fine, agreed with the quality. Southold's were not.
I just didn't ever met last night.
And they'll go have replacements.
No, they did.
How far?
Yeah.
You know, I, I forgot all about it, so I don't know.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't like doing it in a way that's still working.
There's nobody in here after this. I can tell the ones in Polish Town.
Okay.
Alright, Karen, what do we have there?
Thank you.
Okay, this is the addition to Suffolk County historical.
Oh, I thought we did this.
Well, we had discussion last fall.
Right.
Um, and then they resubmitted and Vinnie had to go back and forth.
Okay.
So it's basically ready to go. I did a resolution. Bob said it looked good for April eighteenth.
Good.
It looks nice, it looks nice what they're doing.
Yeah, um, just that because of the length of time between the last discussion and now that you might wanna talk to me about it, um, so that's why I'm here. Um, basically, it's gonna have an elevator and handicap bathroom where they're gonna put in a, um, parking area off of Osborne with a handicap stall. Um, some drainage, uh.
Did they go back to ARB? Cause I know that there were some discussions with ARB about the mechanicals.
It's gonna be a four foot wall there.
So they're gonna put a wall around it, okay.
Um, the LPC ARB are okay with it. I can show you the, um, elevation, you can see it.
Okay, good. Before, when they first came in, they had the condenser units and exposed, where you could see them. And so then they talked about putting shrubs around and now I guess they're doing the wall, which is a great recommendation that the ARB made.
Right. So, I mean, it's, it's fairly straightforward, um.
They look like Transformers.
It, 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 actually, it's gonna, it's gonna look very nice that the way.
It's, it's gonna be a nice.
Yes.
The only problem, and I don't understand, is, uh, the historic, is a, is a historical building.
Yes.
Been there for years and years and years. And anything you put on it cannot blend in with it. It can't, it.
It's modern architecture.
Like, the mo, yeah, it has to be modern, so I don't understand.
I don't understand it either. I think it's terrible.
Go to architectural school and you will learn.
I think it is, I don't know. You think you wanna keep that same thing going?
I agree with Sean Dunlop. I agree with you. I agree with you.
This is a, um, just a big priority, I'm actually on the board here, but the priority, um.
Well, Sid, cause you're gonna be next.
We're ready to approve it. The resolution's drafted, we're ready to approve it.
Okay. Okay, that's great. Because they have a grant from Gardner Foundation and the Gardner Foundation, it was really on the part of the applicant, they didn't submit. So Gardner Foundation wants the money spent as quickly as possible.
Yeah, right.
So the permit is a huge deal for them, so it's gonna come through. I'll, I'll let Kathy know.
They've had it for quite a while.
Yeah, it's, it's scheduled for the eighteenth.
Oh, great, thank you.
Yep.
I like it, anyway, because you gotta, you gotta feel to the next generation too, I mean.
And the actual original design. The original design for the addition showing a contemporary was the architect, I think it was Rob Stromsky that came in.
Yeah, it was.
And he designed the modern part on the building and the ARB and landmarks loved it.
Yes.
Well, you gotta draw the next generation, you got to.
Yeah, and then it's gonna allow all these people that can't get into the building access because, you know, older people tend to like this.
Oh, yeah, for the handicap.
And the stairs and the bathrooms are all located downstairs, a big problem.
Yeah, it's great.
Okay, so put the resume on, yeah?
Put the resume on.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Alright, Chris, is this the National Grid, um, opportunities that we discussed with?
Thank you. They could be a reporter on Georgia, cause that's it.
Yes, so we, um, uh, met the supervisor, deputy supervisor, Casey Stark at the IDA, um, met with the National Grid team about their economic incentives.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I guess what I'll do is I'll scan and I'll distribute it to the board, but I'll, we'll also put it up online as a link. Um, there's a lot of different incentives that National Grid has for businesses, industrial, um, sites and site development uh, that private businesses cannot apply for for efficiency. Or, um, but they do have a grant that's more similar to the, um, grant programs that we apply for for downtown businesses, which is called the Cinderella Program. And it's matching grant funds to help revitalize central business districts and commercial areas and promote smart growth. So, um, it's based on the size of the total capital investment. And, uh, we have several projects downtown that were, were eligible to apply, including Michael Butler's building, Dave Gallo's building, potentially, uh, Castaldi. So above five million is eligible for two hundred and fifty thousand, so Gallo would be able to apply for two hundred and fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Michael's project would fall into one million to five million, so he's eligible for a hundred thousand. So we're gonna apply and have the town sort of order it.
Perfect.
It does.
So what's cool about this is, this is an example of you actually, somebody asked us this question, you actually are finding grants and reaching out to business owners to show them what they don't, didn't know about.
You're always looking for money.
That's right.
Right, and if it's in downtown districts, then all that money is what makes it eligible.
As you should be.
So those are the business owners that you obviously reach out to, those that are having projects that are on the table and ready to go.
Yeah, and we have so much activity now downtown that we're just in a really good position to keep getting money.
Right.
Vacuum up some more money.
Yeah.
I can tell you from a few grants that I've gotten, it's not so much the grant money, it's the administration that kills you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it's true.
Woo, the work that goes behind the.
Actually, today, the Long Island Regional Economic Development Council is meeting for the first meeting for the rollout for the New York State money. So, um, they don't have the specifics on the grant money, but that is actually gonna start coming out in May, so whatever projects we're gonna apply for, for New York State.
It's, it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not free, that's for sure.
Where's Ray Coyne? Some of our rec program. Oh, uh, well, Ray. What did you wanna add?
Well, waiting for Ray.
I always love when you spring this on us.
It was approached, no, this is a sure one, it's something for Ray. I was approached by the fire department.
Yep.
And I guess, uh, a couple of firemen went down to see if they could get, uh, permits to write on the, um.
Larry Taylor. We told them to do whatever we did last year.
That's, I told Larry Taylor that, that's, I told, he was at the.
Yeah.
Whatever we did last year.
He got my ear too.
Huh?
He got my ear too, Larry.
So I mean.
Happy.
I told him I would fly down today.
Whatever we did last year.
I told Ray today, I told Ray, do whatever we did last year, just give us stick.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Cause they're, they're saying, well, the Bay Harbor never passed a resolution. I said, well, no, we prepared one.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Okay, also, because I spoke to Sean about this and, um, I'd like to discuss it with you also, the rec trail. I met with, uh, the surveyor who did the overall survey for the EPCAL subdivision on Tuesday morning. And they've given us a proposal for twenty five hundred dollars to do the meets and bounds description for the easement, that we need to attach the easement so that we can get the county money. Then, so if I have authorization to spend that twenty five hundred dollars, then we should be underway with the, with the trail, hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Uh, the only thing I would say about that is that if we sell, we have to find out how far away from the runway we're gonna be on the southwest side, because you can't.
We're not going down that far yet, we're just doing the.
We're not going down that far.
We're just doing the eastern property line right now.
Oh, okay.
So, really what we need is to figure out where the money's coming from and then do a budget transfer.
Alright.
So you're gonna have to talk to Bill to figure out where the money's coming from. I think it's professional services, I don't think it's a figure.
You know what, well, what I said is that the surveyor did the overall subdivision map for EPCAL and this would have to be done as part of the subdivision, the meets and bounds description, so, um, I'm hoping that it's just.
You know, you'd do it out of CDA. So I'll have to Bill find out, probably use CDA money, it's a CDA project.
Okay. Okay.
We don't know where Ray is?
Oh, we, we getting ready to, to sell that to, uh, Numanati. And I was reading it online yesterday, that a lot of his people are leaving.
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering if that, it was going to.
Come out in the qualified and eligible hearing?
Well, probably would.
Yes.
But I mean, I don't know why they're all, they're all leaving. And this is the first rupie idea.
Well.
I think a lot of them left.
I mean, did a good job with that article you wrote.
What are you talking about? Alright, can we get a motion to go in executive session? I'm not gonna wait here for Ray.
Okay, I make a motion, we close town.
We are coming back, so, we are coming back, so we'll go back here, go to executive session.
And go into. Executive session.
Second, move the second vote, all in favor of opposed extensions, motion carries for executive session.
Alright. And go for personal litigation.
Drew Dillingham, come on in, cause I see you in the hallway. Let's go back here.
Okay. Excuse me.
Do you know? You gotta send me a text when it does, because I'm, I'm.
Oh, yeah. We need, well, we need Judy. John, let Judy out.
John's on a roll today.
John, let yourself out while you're at it.
John's on a roll today.
Yeah, he looks like he's in that, that kinda mood. Yeah, he looks like he's in that, that kinda mood.
Yeah.
We're already on.
We're on.
Alright, yeah, Larry put this on. Oh, look, the red, the red light's on, Larry, yeah, Larry's got it, that's apparently like.
No, it's red. We need yellow, that means that they can hear us back there, but they can't see us, and the green means we're fully on.
There's Bobby Brady though.
I'm gonna freeze. Yeah, he's got it backwards.
Okay, we're gonna, I make a.
Yeah.
Yellow means, no, red.
Red means we're on.
Red means we're lost.
Yeah, I don't remember the Brady, but he's talking about that.
I have to, I make a motion that we. You do, you make a motion?
Continue your objection.
Well, red means.
I second that, all right, opposed extensions, motion carries.
We need all that, but.
Alright, um. What are we here to discuss besides the.
Well, yeah, there's two, two things that we'd like to throw out there, these are good things and, uh, since you don't always get the good things.
Late on the top of the list.
Recreation programs are coming out, uh, the book is coming out next week, the end of next week, uh, we're running two hundred and seventy programs this spring, summer.
Wow.
Um, and there's some really, really good new ones in there, uh, so at the same time, I'm gonna be sending you guys the list of prices before it goes out, so you can approve it. Um, so here, this is it, this is like a printout of some of the classes that we are doing, uh, we're moving, uh, all the, most of the youth classes over to the, the new daycare center, which we're, we think is a wonderful.
Don't take it all, 'cause Judy's gonna have some space.
No, we discussed the one-side youth, one-side adults.
It's not gonna be a daycare center, you know, what do you think, Columbus Avenue.
You can just say Stotsky.
What are we calling it now, the Tag Center, the Tag Center?
Tag?
Tag.
Together All Generations.
Together All Generations, that was our intergenerational.
Back in two thousand and eleven.
Tag, Together All Generations.
Together All Generations.
Tag, you're it. Remember, I'm gonna tell you the tag I used to play when I was a kid, can't do it on camera.
Okay, go ahead.
Free State? Uh, the bus trips, some of the bus trips Ellis Island will go into this year, A Bronx Tale, the new musical, Whitewater Rafting, I don't know why she had that.
Where you going with Whitewater Rafting?
Yeah.
Uh, it's upstate, no, it's upstate, um, it goes, it doesn't go.
Fire hydrant, we're gonna open a fire hydrant.
Back walking lot.
We can open a fire hydrant and run it in.
We can do that. Um, there's some of the camps, Star Wars Live Action Day, I'll send this to you guys, athletic training with your child, that's something new, that's actually a Jim Janasek and Ashley program where they wanna start bringing in, everybody's training, training, training now, but they're gonna teach you how to train with your child.
I'm not training.
Um, Mother's Day Cupcake Workshop, any mothers wanna come?
Well, there's, there's some training.
Herbs and natural remedies for child, so.
But the Mother's Day Cupcake Workshop, that's when the kids come and they make the cupcakes for their mothers for Mother's Day, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I figured that would happen.
So we're spreading out, we'll be at the, the Human Resource Senior Center, that's gonna be the Shade Tree Center, um, the Intergenerational Center at Stotsky, so we're moving more west.
The Tag Center.
The Tag Center.
And the Shade Tree.
And G Y C C, so we're expanding out programs and facilities, so that should help the west side.
George, come on, Sean, you only been here this, that way, eight years.
Here's a list if you guys just wanna take a look at the programs, but that's all I'm here to say.
So I put Judy on the spot, 'cause we had an interesting meeting last week, um, and without disclosing names of companies, why don't you let the press know what we're thinking?
Well, ever since we, um, closed it back in, oh gosh, two thousand and eight, there's been a need and a growing need for a social model daycare, which we couldn't do on our own because it needs, uh.
Wait, you wanna take it?
It's a high price to go for that.
Yeah, I, I, there's too much.
Speak louder.
An adult daycare, social model. So we had a group come in, came in and asked to meet with Sean and myself and Ray, and we spoke with them, and they have funding, they're looking for a building somewhere out here that they can, uh, rent and put a social model daycare in place. I took them over to the new building, they're very interested in using three of the rooms, which we had already, um, designated, it's being for the adults, because they wanna see it. We still continue wanting it to be a Intergenerational Center. Um, they were very happy with what we had there and they're going to, you know, work different things out and then meet again with us on April twenty-fourth to go forward. So it could be the youth will be in there and the preschool and the after-school and the mentoring program will have one side of the building. The adult daycare would be the other side and it kinda serves the, the, we were looking to serve, because they already had their staff in place, trained people, win-win to everybody, I, I.
And how many people do you think that you would be able to, um, care for on a daily basis?
Well, their numbers, it wouldn't be us, because they would.
Or they.
They'd say their numbers go to fifty is what they'll enroll, but it changes day by day, so maybe max would be twenty-five on any given day.
Now, will, will they have old timers too there?
That's what it is, that's what it is, yeah.
The daycare? Is that like, like we, we had before, before we discontinued?
Yes. So, and then they talked about, we could do the meals at the senior center and, you know, they were contracted for the meals for their lunches too.
So how does one qualify for this?
I don't know their criteria right now, you know, we, we're very early in speaking with them.
So, of course, they would be Riverhead residents, right?
I don't know that they're gonna limit it to Riverhead residents, because we don't necessarily, they asked that question and I don't, I mean, I understand we will give preference to Riverhead residents, but we don't necessarily limit our senior programs, there's a number of people that come, they shop the different areas.
No.
I know, but we were collecting fifty-two thousand dollars a year in rent for this center and now we're filling it with, I thought, Riverhead residents, 'cause you guys voted for it.
Well, the youth group.
And now you're saying that we're gonna bring in people from maybe outside.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that they're gonna put a proposal together to us, I'm not worried about the fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
This is a town facility, this is something that is absolutely needed, unbelievably needed in this town, and so I, I think you're gonna have Riverhead preference,
To get back to our.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I don't know that you wanna hamstring them, because they, this isn't costing us anything.
I had two questions, you, you mentioned, you mentioned that this particular group would, would lease this, have it.
Yeah, we would, we would charge them to use the facility.
They have, they have funding.
For a dollar.
They have funding.
And then they, well, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't ask, I didn't really ask what kind of money, um.
We haven't gotten there yet.
The second thing I, I questioned, is this a, a full day or is this like for respite care for people that?
Yes. No, it'd be a full day, but respite care is part of what they do, which satisfies what we were hoping to do.
Right.
To me, it's a win-win.
So it would be somebody five days a week, maybe, like, come on a Wednesday, so.
No, if you only wanna put someone in five, uh, one day a week, that's fine, if you only want them there for the morning, because you have something to do, that's fine.
Right, so it really is like a respite care almost.
The reality is, you're never gonna take any residents from outside the town anyway, because there's such a need here and Brookhaven has one, Southold has one, and the other.
You're right, right, I don't think that would be an issue, right.
And they get funded, I mean, these organizations get funded by the state or the federal government, so they get funded to take care of these people during the.
They have some.
Well, we're gonna charge them to use the facility and we don't have to use our own employees, so it's like a win-win.
Okay, now, yeah, but, uh, these people are gonna be charged, they charge these people.
Good.
There's not a.
That's all I want, money, money, money.
We don't have a fee, but yes.